Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded October 11th, 2022.
Five o'clock, we'll call the Portage County Board to order. Roll call.
We have nineteen supervisors present, Supervisor Weaver, well, actually Weaver is up there. Nope, okay, one moment. We have two supervisors, remote Supervisor Honell and Supervisor Sislevich, and four supervisors excuse Supervisor Weaver, Supervisor Morrow, and Supervisor Matt Jakowski, and, oh, here we go, Gary just walked in.
Evening, everybody.
Scratch that, we have twenty present.
You can stay standing, Barry, all for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Lattick.
Thank you. First, let me say thank you to all of us who have gathered here today, who have chosen to serve for the sake of the people in Portage County as our primary goal. May all of us find our position as supervisors honored to be involved in useful work and honored to bear the appropriate responsibilities. Therefore, I pray that we as supervisors have the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Let us maintain a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people. Let us have the confidence to know what is good and fitting. Let us demonstrate the ability to work together in harmony even whereas there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today that we continue to improve Portage County for those who live and work here. Help us work as a whole rather than as individuals in a spirit of cooperation. Amen.
Correspondence.
Agenda item number two, special meeting attendance forms, and number three, Wisconsin Counties Association 2022 through 2023, Wisconsin counties officials.
Presentations, number four, Representative Katrina Shanklin, well compensation grant program. Come on, come on now.
Evening, Katrina.
Still haven't gotten rid of your crutch.
No, not yet. We quite did write some copies for people as well, I don't know. All right, well, hello, everybody. I was happy to be at the last Land and Water Committee meeting where with questions, I took forty-five minutes. This time, I promise my goal is under a couple and just having the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. So here in Portage County, we've been talking about water quality a lot, and I want to thank the county board and members of county leadership for advancing the Portage County water program. I also wanted you all to be aware of a new state program which I helped launch. It launched on October 3rd this year, and I wanted you to know so that you can promote it to your constituents, especially for those of you who live and represent areas that do not have access to municipal utility water, which we all know is regulated by the federal government, and they have to comply with the federal nitrate standards. So this new program is very similar to the state's existing well compensation grant program, but here is the key difference, it's actually accessible. So over the last few years, I've been working to advance legislation to open up this program, and I'm still committed to working on it. But in the meantime, this new program has launched as of October 3rd to provide ten million dollars in assistance for people, homeowners, renters, and small businesses with income of or below one hundred thousand dollars. This is very different than the existing state program, which was sixty-five thousand. So instead of having a full presentation, I wanted to give you the links and the information to all the different water programs, so that's what you have, it includes my contact information. But real quickly, I wanted you to know that this new program covers a hundred percent of the cost. So if somebody needs a new well, and that well costs fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, if they are qualified and eligible and the DNR approves their application, they will get fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars back. So it's a reimbursement program, a hundred percent of the cost for reverse osmosis or other treatment options, as well as repair, reconstruct, or replace a private well, as long as they test above ten parts per million twice, as long as they're below that income limit of one hundred thousand. This applies to businesses, so taverns, restaurants, daycares, churches, and it also, so organizations as well, and it also applies to homeowners and renters. Many of you are going to have constituents who are eligible for this program, so if you hear from any of them and as you promote this program, I wanted to include the grant application and reimbursement question information. That's been the most useful that I have had, and that's Sandy Chancellor, it's right on the front top page. And then in addition, you're going to want to refer people to some other resources as well, including the state Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for communities that are evaluating long-term needs beyond reverse osmosis and beyond getting a new well, replacing, reconstructing, or repairing a well. The number one goal of this new program is to get as many people as possible treatment options and assistance with the cost of a new well. We all know that people are struggling and that the cost of a well can be anywhere from seven to ten to twelve or even sixteen thousand dollars. We have resources now to get out to our shared constituents, and I want to encourage you to ask your constituents to apply if you think that they're eligible, and feel free to reach out anytime if I can help in any way. I'm trying to get around the district and let communities know, and I will continue to promote this, but wanted you to be aware of it as well. And if you want the more in-depth version of this presentation, it is on my website. It's the same presentation I used at the Land and Water Committee. So with that, are there any questions that anyone may have? Yes, Supervisor Splinter.
Yes, I mentioned this at our local Isaac Wharton League because we're defenders of water in Portage County, and so I did get one question which I couldn't answer, really. I know they have to have two tests at a certified lab, which here is at the CNR building and UWSP. They weren't sure how much that was per test, and some people said, oh, it used to be really rather cheap, but now somebody mentions something about three hundred dollars a test. I don't know what that is.
Sure.
But that would be in it, I mean, I just wonder what they have to do, and then the cap on this is sixteen thousand, if I understand.
Yep, the cap is sixteen thousand, so nitrate-only well test at the water lab at UWSP is twenty dollars. If you want the basic homeowner's package, which tests beyond nitrates, like alkalinity, for example, metals, that would be sixty-four dollars. So if people want to get that reimbursed, they can actually get both of their well tests reimbursed by the state under this program, as long as they're eligible. So if I have a well test of fourteen parts per million, and the DNR accepts my application, I can actually get the cost of that well test reimbursed as well.
And also, I believe we referred people to Jen McNally at the Portage County Planning and Zoning, and she's a valuable local source to have, guide people through the application process, because you don't want to start putting a new well in until you check off all the boxes and somebody says you're okay to go.
Absolutely. Thank you for iterating that point. I want to reiterate it. You do not want to move forward on a new well or a reverse osmosis system until you've applied through the state, been approved, and determined that you're eligible. Have the receipt, or I should say, first you need an invoice or estimate that has to get approved by the DNR. Then they're going to have proof that you installed the well or whatever else you did, the reverse osmosis system. Then they'll cut you a check for reimbursement. So don't move forward without verification, and thank you so much Supervisor Splinter for stating that. Yes.
And what's the window for the back-to-back testing over ten, is it like?
It goes all the way back to two years. So if you have two well tests at a certified lab, so that wouldn't be at a county fair or at a town hall where Jen McNally shows up, but it would be if you handed in your sample to the UWSP water lab. Two tests within the last two years, they have to be at least two weeks apart. So you can't go out tomorrow and take two tests on the same day using your own equipment unless you're a certified lab. You've got to go to UWSP or another certified lab. I have been told that you can rush order your nitrate test for an additional twenty dollars, if you would like, from the UWSP water lab. Great questions. Supervisor Marosi.
Thank you, Representative Shanklin. I have a question about the folks who actually have incomes over a hundred thousand dollars. Are there any programs available to them for just subsidizing the cost of this?
Not right now, and that's because we only had ten million available, so we're trying to target those who are most in need. I would say one of the other programs that they could look at would be the State Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. If they are in a community where over forty percent of the wells tested are above that health standard of ten parts per million, it is likely that that whole community would qualify if it's in a rural area. And so that's something that I would encourage them to look at, because that program recently was expanded by the Inflation Reduction, or I shouldn't say the Inflation Reduction Act, the bipartisan infrastructure law. So the state share is higher than it used to be, and so I've been trying to refer communities to that program as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Katrina, I'm assuming I know the answer to this question, but have you been in touch with the people from Nelsonville?
Yes, I have. So I went out to the Jensen Center the day the application opened and was trying to invite everyone on the eastern side of the county to apply. Originally, I was going to have it at their town hall, but I don't think it has electricity right now, and it was a colder day. So I will continue to have some town halls across the district, providing this information to everyone. And if you also serve on a town board or would like to have me at your next meeting to talk more in depth about this program, please let me know, it's one of my goals. I was also at the water committee meeting in Nelsonville last month, and it's my goal to get around to all the communities that do have water committees. I know the Town of Hall is another one, to promote this program too.
Oh, Representative Shanklin, as we saw in that presentation last week by Jen McNally, this problem is going to be a long-term problem for the whole county. Her map of hotspots with high nitrates was pretty astounding. So I think you partly answered what was my question with your response, if any. But are you confident that the legislature is going to keep funding coming for these homeowner relief efforts? Because I can see this problem extending far into the future, you know?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the question was, am I confident the legislature will continue funding these? I will say, having worked in the legislature and working very hard at advancing water quality policy, this is the most progress we got done in the last two years, and it was a direct result of the Water Quality Task Force, which traveled around the state. I was the co-chair of, we came up to Stevens Point, we toured the water lab. Legislators finally understood, I would say, at least the scope of the problem, maybe not the depth of the problem yet, but that's why we want to encourage all these well tests. We want to encourage communities to get monitoring programs set up like Portage County has. We want to encourage more legislators to become aware of this problem. I will say the awareness is heightened. Because of this new program, we're going to see thousands of people across the state testing their well and determining if they're eligible. And when they get a new well or a new RO, they're going to call their two legislators and say, hey, this was a great program, you need to extend it. So I am confident in that. I'm also confident that, you know, we did write and sign Act 223 into law this session, which actually rewards farmers and provides resources, including fifty thousand dollars, to work on optimizing their nitrogen application, which is a long-term preventative solution. So as farmers work together across watersheds, we have great producer-led watershed groups working on issues like reducing both phosphorus and nitrogen application. We can find ways for them to stay in business and pass their farm on to the next generation while also protecting our water. That's not only cheaper in the long run for taxpayers, but it's a sustainable way of living for all of us, where we're protecting our health, our water resources, our tourism, recreation, and sporting heritage, our property values, and our agricultural heritage. And I think that balance of all the interests and values of Wisconsin coming to the table is an important one that frankly, I think Portage County can lead on. So I'm excited about that. I was excited about the presentations at Land and Water last week about that new nutrient management consortium that Portage County might look at, and I think there are tremendous opportunities moving forward for farmers to work together across the watershed with homeowners, anglers, and every other person who's interested in this issue.
Question answered, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That looks like it.
Thank you all so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate your service, and do not hesitate to reach out if I can be of any assistance.
Thank you. Get rid of that crutch. All right. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register at their request at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair's set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. State your name, please.
Mary Ann Leszewski.
Which item?
Number ten.
Number ten? Oh, I didn't see it, okay. Anybody else?
Nancy Rappi, also item number ten.
Anybody else? Okay. Before we move on, I am going to ask Maria, you all noticed that you have a new clickers. Some of you, we used to have these before. Some of the old supervisors may recognize them, but they were old and outdated, and now the software isn't supported. So we're trying something else, new, new and better, so Maria.
So located at each spot, you will find this, which will provide you some of the basic instruction on how to use these devices. Essentially, when we go to call a vote, it'll pop up on the screen for you, and that is when you will cast your vote on that. There is a little window which will confirm your selection. If at any point you doubt that, just hit it again, and it should show and reappear there. And then Chair Haga will close the vote. And then at that point, we will call upon all of our virtual supervisors to cast their vote, and then we will go ahead and make those selections for them.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right. Confirmation of county executive's appointment, number five. Appointment of Lieutenant Ben Outhen-Brock to the Portage County Traffic Safety Commission for the remainder of the four-year term, expiring April 20th, 2026. Motion by Supervisor Jenkowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six. Appointment of Joe Siren to the Portage County Parks Commission for the remainder of a seven-year term, expiring June 30th, 2026. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions and ordinances. Town of, number seven, Town of Omen's Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Satieson Property.
This is resolution number fifty dash twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-four submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment for the Satieson Property in the Town of Omen. I do suggest a technical amendment to change the date of adoption from the eighteenth to the eleventh.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by whom? Supervisor Soik, thank you. The technical amendment, we're just going to, if there's no objections, we'll just make that correction. So, any other discussion? So, if there's no discussion, all those in favor push the...
Just a minute, let me share.
We have three minutes to vote.
Okay. All those in favor, push yes or the green button. Those opposed, push the red. Or abstain. Their little window's supposed to light up?
Yeah.
Just got a negative sign on the window.
It's not opening the vote. One moment.
I have to go back. This might be...
Hey, go now?
It's like Illinois, you get to vote twice.
You should try again, did you say?
Yep, hit it twice.
They still just get a flash, that negative sign.
And your Will Robinson.
Should I stop it and restart? Sorry, bear with us.
Has anybody hit it? Just keep hitting it, no, something happens.
Keep voting. I had a hired man like this one.
Sorry, one moment. Should I stop and restart?
Once you get to ten times, you get a shock.
Where is that? Sorry, one moment.
We think it may have timed itself out, so. Estimated cost of these devices? Five hundred dollars.
Per?
No.
Yeah, you have to stop that.
First time. Like disconnected.
It's a pretty little thing. Can any of you remember the remote controls that used to actually be the clicker for the TV? Where they click and snap?
You have three minutes, huh?
Say, one moment, we'll try this again.
Did Jake, I get a one on your nose, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, all vote, okay. Go ahead.
I did two.
There you go.
Mine worked too.
My garage door just opened.
So you'll have to, you'll have to call for them.
What are the colors, man?
Okay.
Do you want to call?
Go ahead.
Supervisor Weaver, Weaver, excuse me? Supervisor Honell? And Supervisor Sislevich?
Yes.
Okay. I think you have to tell. There are results right there. Yeah, motion passed, we have twenty-three a's, and that's it. Thank you for your patience.
We'll keep rolling. Number eight, Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Hagen-Bachter's property. I'm sure I botched that up. Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Rockowski. Discussion.
It's Hagen-Bucher.
Of course. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, push yes, and those opposed, push no.
Oh, I got a one again.
It went right off, though. Supposed to stick there?
No, no.
So all those in favor, vote yes, and those opposed, vote no. Oh, there's a ticket. Okay.
See, it wasn't sticking. What, it doesn't stick here?
Okay.
You know, Dave and I ever read on that?
Don, did you vote?
I did, but apparently didn't take it.
You weren't here for civic clerk, we're here. That was interesting.
Scott, Barry, did you vote?
I did.
I did.
Okay, Supervisor Weaver?
Yes.
Supervisor Honell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislevich?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may? Yes. Madam Clerk, are we supposed to push the button twice?
No, next time I'll have Al open it up once I get that button hit to open the polls, and then you only have to select it once.
Okay.
I was too fast that time.
All right, I'm closing the polls. Motion passed, twenty-three to zero.
Number nine, designating the Portage County Sheriff's Office Communication Center as the public safety answering point for Portage County.
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-four submitted by the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. This resolution designates the Portage County Sheriff's Office Communication Center as a public safety answering point for Portage County. I suggest a technical amendment to change the spelling of the word answering and the subject of the resolution to its correct spelling.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Medine. Discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, vote no.
Okay, Supervisor Weaver?
Yes.
Supervisor Honell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislevich?
Yes.
Closing the polls. Motion carried, twenty-three to zero.
Number ten, authorizing an agreement with Pepper Construction Group for the construction of a new healthcare center building to provide construction manager at-risk services.
This is resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-four submitted by the Space and Properties Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes an agreement with Pepper Construction Group for the construction of a new healthcare center building to provide construction manager at-risk services and authorizes appropriate county officials and the county executive to enter into and execute said contract. I do suggest a technical amendment to incorporate the unanimous a-vote of all finance committee members on October 10th.
I have a motion by Supervisor Jenkowski, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Discussion. There's no... Oh, I'm sorry, yes, public comment. Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Leszewski, 1209 Wisconsin Street, Stevens Point. I ask indulgence of members of the Space and Properties and Finance Committees as I repeat some information that I shared at your meetings. In the past week, I have been concerned that there has been misinformation circulating that suggests that because of the current county home census, we should give pause to building a new facility. The census is being kept at a number that our current staffing can care for. When our staffing increases, we will accept more residents. Recently, there were over thirty applications to the county home, and fifteen would have qualified for admission if we had additional staff to care for them. Our occupancy will be provided in the future also by the senior population of baby boomers who will grow fifteen percent or fourteen-hundred people in Portage County by 2025. That will be a three percent annual growth increase. The need for formalized living arrangements is growing. Our local assisted living facilities have an average occupancy of ninety-five percent. Our local community is very serious about wanting to protect long-term care for our future. If they need skilled care, they don't want to have to move hundreds of miles away or be subject to assisted living facilities that would not be licensed or staffed for their needs. Staffing needs for nursing care are not new and will always require our attention. Many efforts are being implemented to stabilize the staffing needs, including two recent salary adjustments of a dollar and a half and three dollars have been approved for CNAs. A generous benefits package is being preserved. There's extensive new advertising for CNAs beginning a couple of weeks ago, and referral incentives may be offered to staff. Legislators also have our healthcare needs on their radar. The governor approved a hundred and four million for long-term care workforce, a fifty percent increase in family care programs equalizing a fifty-four million dollar rate increase. The greatest stabilizing factor for staffing will be a modern new healthcare facility that will provide staff and residents with air... that will provide staff and residents with air conditioning, indoor-outdoor aesthetics, new operational efficiencies such as shorter hallways, new technologies, possible remote patient monitoring, telehealth will all increase marketability and revenue for the facility. Patients will be attracted to the continuum of care from assisted living to skilled cared living. They will have varied surface, they will also be attracted by the varied surfaces of physical therapy and occupational therapy, and an enhanced, worry-free, attractive, modern lifestyle for those residing there. Our history of a five-star quality of care and a return of long-term staff continuity and a new facility will have us once again outcompeting other hiring options. We will not always be caught struggling in the ravages of a pandemic. It'll be one blip on our long history of providing skilled care right here at home. Tonight, I support authorizing the agreement with Pepper Construction Group for construction and management at-risk services. They are highly experienced in constructing healthcare facilities. They will ensure that an excellent facility will be built to preserve staffing and to meet the many needs of our community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Some of you may have noticed that one more thing that we've added or changed is that clock, so, uh, with the three minutes on it, so you can see where we're at, but, uh...
We got somebody online for?
Yep, we have, uh, next up was, uh, Mrs. Roppy.
Yes, Nancy Roppy, nine twenty-five Smith Street, Stevens Point. I agree completely with everything Mary Ann said, um, but I want to address some comments that have been made at the healthcare, space and properties and finance committee meetings with respect to, and, and also at the budget presentation meeting, um, with respect to sustainability and basically why we shouldn't move forward. I, I would refer you to a legendary story about a poor bastard who was beaten and left in a ditch, and certain individuals walked by, turned a blind eye, and kept on their way. But then there was one man who stopped and took pity on that poor person. He didn't know that person, but he stopped and he cared for him, and he picked him up, and he took him to a place where he could be cared for, and he said, "Here is money. Take this money and care for him, and on my return trip, if you've incurred any additional expense, I will pay for it." Myself and nine thousand others voted to be the good Samaritan, and we, as taxpayers, said, "Take this money and care for our fragile elderly." They, we didn't say, "Oh, but it's not sustainable, and oh, it's not mandated, and oh, I'd rather have a brand-new shiny jail." No, we said, "Do the right thing. This is what this community needs. We've been doing it for more than a hundred years." And I would also say to those of you who are sitting on substantial personal fortunes, do not turn a blind eye to that person laying there in the ditch. Do not turn a blind eye to the fragile elderly at the county home, for it is said that it is easier for a camel to pass through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter the gates of heaven. If you turn a blind eye, I would suggest you start working on your explanation now, for when you stand before the dear Lord and he asks you why you voted the way you did, it will be too late when he's marching you to the shores of the Lake of Fire. Thank you.
Supervisor Gefford.
Yeah, I just have a question, so I understand better what, um, what we're voting on. What is the role of this, um, firm that we're voting to select, uh, in the process of constr- are they going to select the, um, contractor, contractors, or are they involved in any way in the actual construction, just so I understand?
Yes. Chris Schultz, procurement director here in Portage County. Believe I've been involved in many of your meetings, maybe some of the new supervisors don't know who I am, but anyways, I would say to answer your question, Supervisor, they will provide services early on in the process to help determine the costing of the design that we're working on during schematic phase, and then continue to work on to that, that costing, and then, once we determine the design of the building, bring you a cost for that building on then which there will be some additional approvals or resolutions that'll come before you. One of them would be the fee that they would charge, they don't know what fee they would overall charge to do the whole project until they know the cost of the project. That is basically the CMA services in a nutshell, which is a little different than design, bid, build. I don't know if I explained that to your satisfaction, that that answered your question? So, basically, they're brought on to be part of a team. There's three team members, we call it the three-legged stool, that's the, that's our owner's rep, Tegra, the design team, Wold, and now the construction manager, and that construction manager will help cost the project as it goes through the design phase, and then eventually to the build, and they will be overseeing the build of the building and the general, they'll be essentially the general contractor.
So, will that construction manager then be recommending, um, you know, who gets selected to do the actual building, or not?
They, they are actual builders, they, they're, they're the, they're the construction managers, so they will put out bids for, you know, different parts of the project and stuff, but they will also be involved in bidding on portions of the build themselves, yes, but they will oversee that management.
Thanks, I think you answered my question well.
Sorry, I was a little all over the place, but.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. May I ask how many services we have already contracted out for the home? As I sit here, I can't remember just how many of them there is. I know we have contracted out several, uh, different arms of that operation.
Chris?
Again, I would say, in recent, um, well, dating back to at least twenty-thirteen, therapy services have been, are contracted out, and then most recently, the laundry services of the healthcare center, and then even more recent than that, um, I would say six months ago or so, would be the food service.
If I may expand on that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So there are several different, uh, operations that we have had to contract out for already. We're having trouble, uh, both finding and retaining professionals to run the home. It seems that, to me, that there must be, the private entities of the county are either doing it less expensive and/or we're not able to pay enough to man that facility, or how long before if we build a new one that we just have a vacant building? We've already contracted out a fair number of the services there for the fact that we couldn't either hire people at the current rate that we were at. It just seems odd to me that we're, we're slowly but surely, uh, leaving ourselves of the, of the running of the facility anyway.
That's, you have?
Statement, no question.
Okay, I'm just clarifying that, thank you. Supervisor Ackman.
Oh, thank you. Um, just to, to sort of a, a, address that, which is a reasonable perspective on the matter, um, this has been seven years now, I was, I was hired privately to revamp the food service operation at, um, the, the nunnery, the one across from Patelli, I'm sure you all know it, um, and they were in, in roughly a similar situation at the time, they had, they had slowly but surely sort of been unable to staff it largely due to their dwindling occupancy, but, um, it was a bit more complicated, and what I saw and what I found there was that contracted services of this nature, specifically the ones that deal with, um, convalescent homes and such, they're national companies, so they have a larger pool of resources, particularly staffing, that they can literally relocate, they can import employees from out of the existing sort of job, uh, well, locally. Personally, I think the quality of service goes down every time you use one of these services in place of people that live and work here and care for the people, um, but that's immaterial to the point. It isn't generally just a matter of not being able to pay enough, sometimes it really is that the, the ebbs and flows of available staffing in particularly service industry jobs just goes up and down. I don't know that, based on what I've seen, that it would necessarily happen at the Portage County home, there's, there's way too many people invested here in it. That's, that's all, no question, just a statement.
Anybody else with questions or statements? Supervisor Keller.
I, I do have a question, this whole thing went to a vote to the community, and really the community didn't know anything about it, except to see some signs in some yards that said, "Vote yes" or "Vote no." Nobody in the community knew that we had subbed out these services that are going on, and that the building right now is only taking care of a few people, because we can't hire enough people to take care of more, and don't get the, I don't want to give away how you think I'm going to vote on this, I'm just raising the question, but, uh, meeting with, uh, Director McDonald recently, and she, she informed me we lose six hundred dollars a day per patient. So, I haven't heard any talk about what the long-term plan is to change the direction of what's going on, and the community hasn't been given any guidance on this, certainly before they even voted to build a new one. So I would like to know just what we're looking at, just like Mr. Jakowski just said, is this going to be sitting empty after we're halfway into making payments on it?
Supervisor Oki.
I also would just comment that I, I appreciate that the infrastructure is still there for hiring positions, because if you break down the infrastructure, it becomes very difficult to rebuild it, so what I'm saying is that there are open positions available to be filled, so, and I, and I, I think there are innovative ideas that are coming forth to perhaps meet that need. Whether or not we have the workforce that's willing to step up and to step into those positions in this area at this time, I don't know. Um, however, I, I think that, that, um, I think that if, I think too, that, that if there's a timeline that kind of defines, um, how we're looking at this, how we're measuring the success of building that infrastructure so that we can accommodate an increased census at the healthcare center, that would be very helpful all around. Perhaps this isn't the time to really cut it, you know, cut it off, because we all know the existing problems in the community with workforce, um, but I think that would be my point of interest, is to somehow define some type of timeline for measuring or for evaluating whether or not we're on the right track and whether or not we have the capacity to build, to fulfill that infrastructure.
Supervisor Morasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Piggybacking on Supervisor Oki's question and, and suggestion, uh, we have been working diligently with the, um, the committee, the human resources director, the healthcare center director, to create a plan with some specific benchmarking in terms of hiring strategy, attraction, retention of CNA and nursing staff that are vital to the operation and to, um, having enough people to staff the facility so we can increase the census. So we are working on that, um, currently. Uh, we're also working on some plans, uh, with creative partnerships with the community and, um, educational facilities that are, uh, working with CNAs to get them, you know, their certifications, and hopefully we can work on some sort of scholarship type of program that can get them to work at the, um, Portage County Healthcare Center as part of their, their stipend or work experience. I know there's other programs already happening, um, where, or, um, um, sorry, students from mid-state are coming to work at the healthcare center. Uh, right now, though, we are, like I said, we, we just got the, uh, raises for CNAs and nurses at actual competitive rate with the help of, um, HR department and our county executive, so, uh, right now, or that's, that just happened, you know, that just happened a few weeks ago, and those positions are being aggressively advertised, and hopefully we'll start getting some bites and, uh, for some of our staffing concerns. Uh, currently, what we're looking at, though, right now, is just approving, um, this contract with Pepper so that we can continue with the planning process, and then, over the next, uh, three months here, um, so sometime after the first of the year, is when the next, the next big kind of, um, service and chunk of change that we're going to have to spend on the project will come ahead. So currently, right now, we're just asking that we spend a small amount of money to continue the project, project move, can you, sorry, continue to move it forward with the design phase, um, some important boring information, boring as in drilling, uh, information, uh, so we can know where the building can be placed, uh, and, um, move forward that way, and I think, if I'm correct, and please, Director Schultz, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, you know, this is looking at about two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of expense for just the CMAR, uh, which is significantly lower than, um, than we thought, to be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would probably give some people some pause, so, um, we've massaged those fees down a little bit, and it seems like it would be appropriate to continue to move forward, um, while we do this benchmarking with HR, finance, and the healthcare center come forth with a plan, so, um, the board is confident that we're making the right decision. I also hope to do some sort of presentation in the future, once we have these, uh, factors in place, so that I can get the board up to speed on what we're doing, and hopefully, um, build your confidence and trust in pushing this project forward for the people. Thank you.
Chris, did you want it?
If I could just?
Go ahead.
Add to your, um, what you said, Supervisor Morasi, I believe it's important to know that the totality of the three contracts we're going through this first phase would be between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand, as he mentioned, not only the CMAR, that's one portion of the expense, but the other contracts are incurring costs to create a totality of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, roughly, along with a few services of soil boring and wetland delineation. Thank you.
Can, can anybody tell me if this, so these, these monies for this contract would be paid back through the referendum question? We're allowed? Go ahead, Chris.
As Director Josie isn't, so I'll do my best to speak, uh, on that term, unless she's online.
She may be online. Oh, she was. Go ahead, Chris.
I would say.
I'm here.
There you go, you're off the hook, Chris. Jen, can you tell me if this is, this, uh, money for this contract would be, uh, we would be able to, uh, uh, is covered because of the referendum question?
Yes, so current expenses that we're having to pay this year are coming out of the existing healthcare center fund. However, I did budget into next year's referendum levy amount to reimburse the county for those expenditures.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Well, you know, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, maybe in the scheme of things, seems like a small amount of money, but to me, it's a rather large amount of money. And aren't we in a catch-twenty-two situation where? And aren't we in a catch-22 situation where if we don't have enough census to cover, or staff to cover the census, and we don't have enough census to hire more staff? And I wonder, when we talk about the community being informed, I wonder if the community realizes that because it's a county-run entity, it has to be a Medicaid, Medicare-approved home? And if somebody from the counties around us, say we build a new facility and some, and members of the community from the, or excuse me, members of communities around us fill our home and we're losing $600-plus dollars per person a day, that we, the populace of Portage County, are going to be paying $600 per day for individuals who didn't live, work, or pay taxes here in Portage County? Statement, no question.
Next, Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, I guess I'd call this a response or addressing a concern. And it goes back to Supervisor Jakowski's first comment earlier that, you know, regarding the workforce problem, you know, every other month we get a report from Dale Knapp at Forward Analytics. And over the last couple of years, he's extensively covered the problem of our workforce shortages. And part of it has to do with what Mary Ann brought up earlier, which is the demographic crash that's going on in Wisconsin, north of Highway 21, more or less. So we have a number of counties act north of us that are aging out at a rate that they're losing population. Workforce is disappearing. In both Health and Human Service Committee and CAP Services Board, I constantly hear about this workforce shortage. You know, position refills at HHS, every, every single meeting, there's a whole bunch of them. The director of CAP Services frequently uses the term staffing, staffing crisis, right? So this problem is not one that's easily going to be, you know, addressed. In fact, it has to be, I think the whole county's association needs to get to work on how we make, not just our county, but the whole set of 72 counties into attractive places for the young workforce of tomorrow. I think I might have mentioned this before, that, you know, there's no easy solution. And if we privatize lots of services, what makes us think that the private services are going to be able to attract workforce any better? Sure, they may raise wages. Then we're going to pay more for services to the privatized service. You know, and it's throughout, throughout both public and private sector. My wife talked to a plumber today about a new water heater. And the guy said, you know, I just can't find young workers, even though our field profession of plumbing pays quite a bit of money for a young person who just got their certificate, right? So I don't think we can just, you know, brush aside these problems and say, well, you know, we'll just pass that off to somebody else. Because then the quality of care for our elder people, and we are aging out too in Portage County, is going to go down. So that's, I guess, I don't know if I addressed that concern or not, but that's my attempt to.
Supervisor Splinter.
I was on the healthcare committee prior to COVID, two years prior to COVID. And I think the census at that time, if I recall, was 55 to 60 people that were being served at the, at the Portage County home. That home has been rated five stars, five stars for as long as I can remember. And I had just a personal experience with a friend of mine, Mark Mozovsky, who many of you guys know from Portage County, first Portage County executive. Mark ended up in the, in the county home several times. And then finally he got into a corporate home. And every time I visited him at the county home, I asked him, how are they treating you? Everything's going good? Oh, he couldn't, he couldn't praise them enough. And then finally he ended up in a corporate home on the north end of town. And he called me up and he said, get me out of here. Help me get out of here. And so I ended up getting out of here. So it was a pretty house, it was a pretty home, but the, the services were nowhere near with what we have here in our Portage County home. And COVID has taken a toll. And we have to remember during COVID, for that two to three horrible years we have to go through, not one time that I recall anybody in our Portage County home contracted COVID while in that home. They were doing such a great job and they were heroes of our community. The referendum passed by a mandated amount, I think 60% or better. People want to know that in 20 years, I'm going to be 91 and I'm probably going to need a home somewhere. I'd like to have it right in my own, my own county and where I can have my granddaughters, my grandsons to come over and visit me. I don't want to be stuck 300 miles away where they say, well, write me a letter. People want that as part of our community, they voted for it. This vote tonight is just part of the process of getting a good plan together. And I encourage everyone, I know it's expensive to do studies, but people don't work for nothing. And in the future, as far as staffing goes, before COVID, we were doing just great. COVID knocked the heck out of everybody because statewide, you name it, people have a hard time staffing. You go up the century, they have a hard time staffing even. So that will come around eventually. It's like the stock market. Right now, everybody's worried about their stock market, their 401Ks. But I think everybody here is pretty confident that historically that will come back. And I think our staffing problems will resolve themselves. We'll have a beautiful home when you get done. And I encourage everyone to at least push us forward to the next step so that we have a good qualitative analysis of cost. And then we can vote on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Dodge.
As I understand it, it was binding, the binding part of the referendum was the 4.5 million. And every time you give personnel raises, more of the operations go toward that 4.5 and less for the building. I'm in favor of hiring this group to give us a better answer on the cost of the building. We cannot exceed 4.5 million. And I think we budgeted 2.8 for operations. So we need some answers before we make a decision. And I will vote for this.
Anybody else? So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, vote yes. And opposed, vote no. Now it's not taken.
Sorry, one moment.
All to the end here and all the drama and nothing.
It stalled out again.
We obviously have a few bugs to work out and that's good that we're doing it tonight with a little lighter agenda, but got to get there. Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if any of you other supervisors have any questions about process at any time, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. I'm happy to answer questions to the best of my ability based on what the committee has decided. Please know I do not speak for all of them, just myself. But I can definitely find the resources and get those answers to you if you have any questions. But I thank you for hearing us out and moving forward with us. Thank you.
Okay. We're ready. All those in favor, vote yes. And opposed, vote no. Didn't do it again. No, maybe it did. It's taken. Push it again. Keep voting till you get your vote. Barry, keep pushing her. Mike?
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, those who are virtual, we have Supervisor Weaver.
Yes.
Supervisor Hanle?
Yes.
Supervisor Sislevich?
Yes.
Okay, closing the polls. Motion carried 23-0.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.